I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, August 10th, 2021. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. We'll jump right into our agenda with council comments. No comments? City manager comments?
No comments at all.
Matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. Do we have the sign-in sheet yet?
Is there a sign-in sheet? There wasn't a sign-in sheet. About what time?
Uh, we can make it. That's good. We had one person sign up, and this is for non-agenda items. Is that Sam Weddington?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
May I remove this?
We're not currently under an indoor mask mandate, so that's fine.
Okay. I wrote letters if I could just give this to you. Well, this is a new one I got for you. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll get to the point. I wrote a previous letter last month detailing my concerns with the landfill. Thank you for the meeting earlier. I know that this will not be solved overnight, and I'm also encouraged by the fact that you're taking up, I believe it's a bond issue, or some, take a million dollars potentially spending it on the, on this. I get all of that. However, I'm here tonight to talk about cooperation between Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee. I've been over at Tennessee City Council to do the same, and so I have four distinct things I would just ask you to consider doing. And the main one is, is I would love to see a subcommittee or some sort of joint commission formed between Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia that also includes the citizenry, so that there's an opportunity for people to go on the record about how this is impacting them. There are parallel ways of do, or there are ways of doing this that you can see in other government agencies. For example, with the EPA, they do what are called environmental impact statements before they enact policy or what have you, and they engage the public, put the public's comments on record, so that it's a matter of the decision-making process. Again, I appreciate meetings like the one tonight. However, I would like to see the public's comments or ways for the public to be involved proactively in this more than just sort of being updated, where they can be active. And I would like to see it done jointly between the two cities. And so I want to encourage you to consider that. Again, four distinct things here. And then beyond that, I would also ask, too, that this just be a, beyond just information meetings, that this be added to the agenda, so that it is, again, a matter of public record, that every member of this council is on record either voting or discussing this matter at each and every council meeting. I just want to be short. Please read the letter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was the only person who signed up for non-agenda items. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Nave. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Farnum. Also wanted to mention, let the record show that Mr. Wingard is unable to make it tonight.
And I'll just add that he's unable to make it due to a personal situation.
Moving into our regular agenda, item number one, resolution approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding. Staff report.
Counsel, before you all, you have a resolution tonight approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding. Over the past several years, the, well, the city initiated a lawsuit in 2018 in regards to the opioid crisis that has not only impacted the city of Bristol, but much of rural Virginia and really the rest of the entire nation. And over the several years, through legal maneuvering, a settlement has been reached. The Commonwealth of Virginia is a part of that settlement as well, and the memorandum is attached that will detail how those funds can be spent once allocated to the city of Bristol. And this resolution is approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding. At this moment, there is not a specific dollar amount that I can give you as to what the city would receive, but it, we will get that over the next several months as we continue to move through the legal process.
Thank you. No one signed up for public comment on this item. The next item is reading of the resolution.
Resolution approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia, through its elected representatives and council, and the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Office of the Attorney General, are separately engaged in litigation seeking to recover cost incurred and to be incurred in abating the opioid addiction epidemic that plagues Virginia communities. And whereas the city of Bristol and the Commonwealth of Virginia share a common desire to abate and alleviate the impacts of the opioid addiction epidemic and to maximize litigation recoveries from those third parties responsible for the same. Whereas in order to advance our common interests, the city of Bristol and the Commonwealth of Virginia through council have extensively negotiated the terms of a memorandum of understanding relating to the allocation and use of such litigation recoveries. Whereas the city's outside opioid litigation council has recommended that the city approve the proposed memorandum of understanding, and whereas the city attorney has reviewed the available information about the proposed memorandum of understanding and concurs with the recommendation of outside council. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Bristol, Virginia, assembled on this day at which a quorum is present, that the city of Bristol hereby authorize and approves or confirms authorization and approval of the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference thereto as Exhibit A, and directs the city manager and city attorney to execute or enter into such memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city of Bristol, passed and adopted by the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on the 10th day of August 2021.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval of the resolution as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Nave. Is there any council discussion?
I'll just say, I am, I'm glad to see this is coming before us and that a settlement has been reached. The opioid epidemic has not only touched Bristol, but a whole lot of rural America, southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee. So I'm glad to see that localities will have access to some type of settlement. We're unclear on what the amount of money is so far, but I'm glad we'll have access to some type of settlement to do some good things, to hopefully help some of the people who've been affected by opioid, you know, whether it be people who've been addicted to it, or, you know, the families of people who've had a loved one that they've lost opioid addiction. So I'm very glad that this is moving forward and that we're at this point.
If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Item number two, the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Staff report.
Counsel, in the spring, the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act, which we call ARPA here in the city of Bristol. And the city of Bristol, through this act, is going to recover roughly $10.2 million. And this is just an overview of how we are going to go through these funds and how these funds will be allocated over the next several months and years going forward.
Jane.
Just hit slide one. So the American Rescue Plan Act source includes GFOA documentation. The covered period is through December 31st of 2024. Cost incurred by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st of 2026. The city received its first disbursement on May the 18th of 2021 of $5,013,687, and will receive a second disbursement one year later. Total, the city will receive $10,027,374. There are four eligible uses for these funds. We are going to focus on uses one and four over the next several months, and then we will be able to move on into items two and three at later dates. So the four eligible uses are, number one, to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019, or COVID-19, or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Two, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the state, territory, or tribal, local government that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employees, employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. Three, for the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue of such state, territory, or tribal, local government due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the state, territory, or tribal government prior to the emergency. Or, four, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. You go ahead. So the eligible expenditures. So containing or mitigating COVID-19 includes PPEs, medical expenses, capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs, et cetera, behavioral healthcare needs, mental health needs, crisis intervention, promote access to social services, and three, payroll benefits for public health, safety, human services, or similarly situated employees, primarily dedicated to the COVID-19 response. Negative economic impact is impacted industries, for example, tourism, travel, hospitality. They must have had an economic harm caused by COVID-19, and the use must be to respond to the identified negative economic impact. Rebuilding public sector capacity to pre-pandemic level, levels, which is bringing back public sector staff. You will see here in a few moments, we will be asking, or that, to bring back six and a half positions that we lost due to COVID-19 in that budget cycle. Small business support, which includes loans, grants, and assistance, and also helping the hardest-hit communities. Next, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, and this is borrowed from the GFOA. Uses aligned with Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Water Revolving Fund and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund to expedite project identification. Building, upgrading facilities, transmission, distribution, and storage systems, including the replacement of lead service lines. Invest in wastewater infrastructure projects. In other words, constructing publicly-owned treatment infrastructure, managing and treating stormwater or subsurface drainage water, facilitating water reuse, and securing publicly-owned treatment works. And recipients retain substantial flexibility to identify these water and sewer infrastructure investments that are of the highest priority for their own communities. If you were here at the meeting prior to six o'clock, some of the things that we talked about in that meeting can be covered by ARPA, but we'll get into more detail with that as we move throughout the fall. So what's next? We have asked department heads to submit applications to be reviewed by the ARPA committee. Those applications have, that application deadline has been met, and those applications have been submitted, and we will be reviewing those at the committee level here shortly. The guidance has been gone out to the committee members, so the committee members know what we have to look for in order to approve certain types of projects. Projects related to the landfill, I can tell you right now, I will be putting at least $180,000 from these ARPA funds in order to cover pumps and the wet wells out at the landfill, in order to replace a couple of pumps and work on our wet well. Next, we will be replacing full-time employee positions that were eliminated due to COVID-19. That's six and a half positions, and roughly for this year, that'll be $285,390. Next, the citywide needs, that's the application process where we're at right now, and only projects that fall within the guidance will be considered. Next, we will, after we get through that process, we'll go to small business grants, and then we will go to outside entities. And once the projects are presented to council, expenditures will move forward. And I think that is the last slide. So any questions in regards to ARPA?
So you said that initially we're focusing on uses one and four?
Yes.
When will we, when did you say we'll come back to looking at items two and three?
We will, as we go through this process, the items two and three will fall within what's been created in economic harm. The revenue loss, I believe, is number three. We're still working on that calculation to determine whether or not the city actually had any revenue loss that we could use any of those funds for. So it'll be over the next couple of three months before we start talking about any of those.
And you said that about $285,000 would go toward restoring lost positions?
Yes. Those positions include an IT clerical staff, a police officer, a firefighter, a police records clerk, a police receptionist, a senior center supervisor, and a part-time animal shelter worker.
What's the timeline on those jobs being posted and filled?
As long as council approves everything tonight, we'll get those things posted hopefully by the end of the week and get those jobs filled as quickly as possible.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, item three, public hearing for supplemental appropriation of $15,590,425. I hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is a public hearing for the supplemental appropriation of $15,590,425. The hearing was advertised in the August 1st, 2021 edition of the Bristol Herald Courier. And the details of the supplemental appropriation are shown on the screen. Tell you, it looked bigger in my computer than it does right here. I hope everyone can see that. I'll go down through this. General fund transfers, this is, the revenue will come from beginning balance in the general fund. The expenditure is a transfer to solid waste disposal fund of $1,016,079. Solid waste disposal fund, all in the disposal department, fund director and for disposal employees, $313,851. Rent of equipment, $50,000. Fuel, $27,228. The odor mitigation system, $100,000. Gas well installation of $525,000, for a total of $1,016,079. Once again, the revenue for that is a transfer from the general fund. The COVID-19 federal funds, these will hit various departments, and as Mr. Eads just mentioned, once the dollar amounts are presented to council, those will move forward. This will be appropriated at the fund level. For COVID-19 federal expenditures, $5,000,4615. School operating funds, this, this also will hit the schools' operating fund in various departments. It is the SER3 American Rescue Funds, and very important to note here, this is no local funding. This is entirely 100% federal funding of $8,543, I'm sorry, $8,543,652, for a total supplemental appropriation of $15,590, I'm struggling, sorry, $15,590,425. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody had signed up for public comment on this item, so I'll hereby close the hearing. And the next item, item four, supplemental appropriation of $15,590,425. Staff report.
Once again, Mayor, and members of council, this is the supplemental appropriation that we just detailed previously, and staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Hey, counsel, I just want to reiterate that we will be moving forward with replacing and rehiring those six and a half positions, if there's any questions about that. And the, and the wells.
Nobody signed up for public comment on this item. If it would be appropriate, since a lot of these funds are with the school system, I know the superintendent is here tonight, Dr. Perrigen, I know you've already went over this with the school board, but if you would like to speak and address anything, you're more than welcome to.
We, as you know, were asking for a supplemental appropriation of 8.5. Part of this money was already appropriated last year. We did not spend all that money last year, so it has to be re-appropriated this year. The total SER3 funding that we were allotted was $9.2 million approximately. We have spent a portion of that already. We do have to set aside 20% of that $9.2 million for learning loss, which we have, but we also intend to do a number of other things with the remaining funds in addition to learning loss, which the, the major one that I think affects the city is to improve our capital needs in our school division, which potentially could include building a new school, but definitely replacing roofs, improving our HVAC systems, and a lot of other renovations that are long past due. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I do have one question. So I know you said that, you just said that part of the money could be used for renovation and repair of existing schools. So I know that one thing that had been talked about was more heavy renovation at Stonewall Jackson. Is that something that would be on the docket regardless of the timeline with building a new school?
Yes, sir. We have already started the process of doing major renovations at Stonewall Jackson. Those will include some HVAC work that'll be done through our SER funding, but we have also began the process to do an energy performance contract that will also enable us to do some additional improvements at Stonewall Jackson mainly, but also at the other three schools that we intend to keep open, which would be Van Pelt Virginia Middle School and Virginia High School. You know, COVID has caused a lot of heartache and grief across our city, our state, and our nation, but one of the good things that have come about is we have really made a huge dent in our capital improvement plan because of the money that had been made available through the coronavirus relief program that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, which really will say, even though I know that at the end of the day, our taxpayer, our tax dollars are going to the federal government for this to happen, but this is not, this has taken a huge burden off the city because we're able to knock these items off of our capital improvement plan. But yes, the short answer is yes, we will be doing major innovations at Stonewall Jackson regardless of the status of the new school.
If I remember correctly, when you came and talked about that before, there was a gap between what the city would have to pay, is that the energy savings contract, will that make up that gap? Or will...
No, the, the gap, the, the proposal had included SER funding, energy performance contract, and there was an additional $500,000, which was really, if you're familiar with Stonewall Jackson, we have some classrooms downstairs where our pre-K is currently housed. You cannot get to the cafeteria, which is right beside the pre-K, without walking outside of the building and going back inside of the building, or going upstairs where we don't have handicap accessibility. And so the remaining amount that we were asking city council for, which was 400 and some odd thousand dollars, was to connect the pre-K classroom to the cafeteria so that you wouldn't either have to make a choice to go outside or to go upstairs in case there was a student with accessibility needs.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Is, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation of $15,590,425 as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Nave. Council discussion.
I do have a few questions about the, the items that we're going to be spending at the landfill. So I guess my main question, you know, after, we were only allowed to have two council members at the meeting before this, so I watched a good portion of the landfill discussion online. And I guess one question that, that I have is, what kind of timeline do we have to see some type of measurable metric on the stuff that we're, that we're spending this money on?
You know, I could sit here and lie to you and tell you you'll have a solution by 1st of September. I can't do that. We do know that the gas well company will be onsite on August the 23rd to begin installing the gas wells. I anticipate that to be a four to six-week process, and then you've got to make sure all the gas wells are connected and working properly. So it may be, you know, six to eight weeks before we see some sort of difference, and we hope we see a difference then. I don't know if we will or not. This is what the experts are telling us, and, you know, I'm just having to trust the experts on how to deal with this landfill.
Another question that, that I have, I've seen some people in the community discussing the line item for hiring a landfill manager. Could you go into some of the benefits associated with having a specific qualified landfill manager?
Sure. You know, over the past 20 years, or maybe a little bit longer, there has, there's been a landfill manager, but there has never really been a landfill, what I would call, director. And what the city truly needs is someone that's solely dedicated to make sure that we are following every EPA and DEQ regulation as it pertains to this landfill. We need someone that's willing to come in and give us the hard facts when it comes to the landfill and what needs to be done and what needs to be expended. You know, you can look back over the past 20 years, and I can Monday morning quarterback every decision that's been made, just as in 20 years from now, people will Monday morning quarterback every decision I've made. But what is painfully obvious is, the city over the course of the past 20 years did not want to charge appropriate rates either for commercial haulers or for residents in order to financially fund the landfill in a way that it needed to be funded, to give it all the tools necessary to be operational. I can promise you, if waste management or republic services was running this landfill, they would not have operated this landfill on the budget that we have operated it on. It would have, they would have shut it down or put the money into it. There's just no way that this landfill should have ever operated the past 20 years on the budget that it had. And I'll just say it, you know, a lot of this is, when it comes to fees, because a locality owns it and sets the rates, it's politically motivated, and people do not want to make the citizens mad when it comes to rates, and they were afraid to make commercial customers mad when it came to rates. And unfortunately, if we're going to operate a business, we have to operate it like a business, and we have to have someone that's solely committed to the operation of that
And one, one more question. Could you go into some detail about the odor mitigation system and how that works?
Well, they are looking at several different ways to have an odor mitigation, but what this odor mitigation system does, it sends out a vapor of, of a substance that then connects with the methane or hydrogen sulfide that's escaping from the landfill. And Mr. Hope from Draper Aiden explained it, if you could see the atoms in the air, these would attach to it and then force those atoms down, where they would not escape the landfill. Now, at the same time, this is very, it's subject to wind, it's subject to humidity, and so it will be some trial and error to make sure we put this in the right place at the right time to capture the gases that are escaping. And this is not a fragrance. I mean, this is not a Fabreeze plug-in that's just going to mask what's out there. I mean, the way it's been explained to me is it's actually going to break the chemicals down... down and keep them from, um, creating the odor.
I've had a lot of the same questions, council, I've had people discuss, and that particularly the odor mitigation system. Anyway, um, you know, questions about how that works, what chem- if there might be additional chemicals, you know, I think, cause there's really no description of that, and they just read it and they think you're, like you say, Fabreeze, or putting chemicals on chemicals, and, um, so I, I do appreciate that, although, the other question is, with that, what is, just like the gas wells, will that have to be put out for bid and come back?
The gas wells have already been put out for bid, and, um, so that is, um, let's see, the approval of the bid is, uh, item number five. So
The odor mitigation system?
If the, um, I, I believe if it's made up of pieces, um, no, but if we believe that, that one vendor is going to provide it from start to finish, we will bid that. But, but my feeling is right now it is, it is pieces, so the answer to that is no. We budgeted one hundred thousand dollars, that's an estimate, if it comes in at ninety thousand dollars, it's not required to be bid out, so, um, we just tried to come up with an estimate that would cover the cost.
And then I guess, to kind of step back and give the thirty thousand fifty, which may have done by clock in the earlier meeting, you know, one of the questions is, a lot of people say this, and, you know, how, why all these steps are necessary, what, you know, the odor mitigation, what the wells, how each one will help reduce the, the issues at the landfill, as well as, uh, help us meet, uh, what we said we were doing, the odor mitigation plan, which said that the B D E Q, uh, you could, if you want to expand on that a little bit?
Sure. In regards to the seventeen, well, there's, it's, it's multiple processes going on here. One key component is cover, and, uh, for the past two or three weeks, we've had, uh, two individuals making sure they're putting, collecting cover and putting cover into the landfill and then spreading cover all across the landfill. If you don't have the cover on the landfill, then that allows gases to escape. So we're trying to get that landfill covered appropriately so that we're keeping gases within the landfill. The landfill gas wells will then be able to collect more gas and, uh, send that to either to Engenco for electricity production, or when Engenco cannot produce electricity, it is then flared off. So those two work in conjunction with one another. The odor mitigation is, um, that, that piece of it will, well, let me step back. There, I have seen those same concerns about chemicals. I have not been told this directly, I'm just repeating what Mr. Hope said a few moments ago at the meeting. He says that this vapor that will be used for this, uh, odor mitigation system, that liquid is safe enough to drink. So he, so it's not a harsh chemical that's being put out, it's a, um, it's in a liquid form that then vaporized that collects the gas molecules before they escape.
So then, then the mitigations, so the cover
Keeps the gas in the landfill, the wells then try to extract as much as they can, and then whatever might escape the mitigation system will try to keep it from getting outside the footprint of
That's correct.
And then the staff is necessary to, to ensure that all this functions properly?
Yes. I can tell you that right now, um, in order to operate that landfill appropriately, we're woefully understaffed. Uh, these four individuals that we will be hiring, uh, they will be solely dedicated to cover, and, um, as issues arise, they may be pulled off of cover to deal with some other issue or to help in some other place within the landfill, but their job is solely to load the yook with dirt, drive the yook to the landfill, unload it, and then someone will be on a dozer pushing that dirt around to cover the landfill.
Thank you. That was a very good explanation. I think it helps, not just for us, but for the public as well, because, again, a lot of people have asked those questions, so I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say, um, you know, we're sitting here talking about spending a million dollars or so on fixes that are needed at the landfill, and, um, you know, just to be able to have that discussion, if, if these issues really arose a few years ago, where we were financially, we would be probably scrambling to try to figure out, how do we come up with that money? Um, so to be able to, uh, have it in the general fund, I think that's a testament to the hard work of city management, the finance department, other department heads. To be able to put the city in this position where we have a plan and when issues arise, we're able to take care of them. So I just wanted to add that.
We can't have too many more issues, though.
Right.
Asking, spradling the question, it kind of follows along with that. So I assume that this, where it says beginning fund balance, this was money that was, uh, carried over in the unassigned fund from the end of last fiscal year?
It's actually from June, um, thirtieth of twenty twenty, that unassigned, um, fund balance that we hadn't expended yet. We're still two point seven million dollars over the policy, um, goal. We haven't, we've just finished closing out twenty-one. We won't really know the unassigned fund balance calculation there until December. So this actually was from unassigned fund balance, has calculated six thirty twenty twenty, and preliminary numbers show certainly that, that, um, amount will increase in December.
And so, so we still have the, this doesn't tap into the monies that we've set aside?
No, it does not impact the reserves in any way. It is funds in excess of our unassigned fund balance policy goal of eighteen percent.
So people understand we're still, previous to the end of last year, set aside the million dollars that we typically do after the end of the year, I've done the sound fund balance stores, uh, every
Yes, sir.
So we've already met that?
Yes, yes.
If there's, uh, no further discussion, we have a, a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda, approval of the bid award for landfill gas extraction well drilling to APTIM Government Solutions LLC. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This process began with an invitation to bid for landfill gas extraction well drilling. The invitation to bid was placed on the city's website and Eva, which is Virginia's electronic procurement site, on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and closed on August second, twenty twenty-one at two P M. Four responses were received, and after a review of the bids, APTM was deemed to be the lowest responsive bid at three hundred and nine thousand and eighty-seven dollars. Like to, um, thank Ms. Vicki Warren, our procurement specialist, as well as, um, Mr. McCullough for the, um, the work they did in getting that posted, and, um, making sure we followed the Virginia Procurement Act while still, um, getting this done very quickly. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Staff recommends that council approve APTM Government Solutions LLC for the landfill gas extraction well drilling bid award.
Thank you. Uh, nobody signed up for public comment on this item. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, move for approval of the bid award for the extraction to APTIM Governmental Solutions.
Second.
We have a, a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Nave. Is there any council discussion?
Uh, I'll just say very briefly, um, like, like the CFO said, thank you to our procurement specialist, uh, for doing this. I, I read through this bid, uh, over the past couple days, and this is, you know, this is extensive, and there's a lot of work that goes into, anytime like something goes out for bid, uh, for it to be reviewed, and, um, just, you know, the volume of this bid was, was a lot of work for her, I'm sure, so, so, you know, tell her, we appreciate her, uh, and, and thank you for presenting it.
If there's no further discussion, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item of our agenda, uh, first reading of ordinances. E one, public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol. I hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
Uh, council, uh, tonight you have before you a, um, petition to vacate a right-of-way code, uh, Code of Virginia, section fifteen point two hyphen two thousand and six requires that the vacating of a public right-of-way requires advertising of such requests in a public hearing. The city council shall then consider the request to vacate the right-of-way by ordinance. Attached, you will find an ordinance to vacate a public right-of-way along with a drawing of its location. This request is being made by Mr. Stephen Buchanan, pastor of administration at Fellowship Chapel Church. Fellowship Chapel Church owns all adjoining properties to the east and west of this segment of Carter Street. This request has followed the procedure to vacate the right-of-way. A petition has been filed in the public hearing and was advertised on July twenty-seventh and August third. The request has been circulated to other departments and to B V U. B V U requires a utility easement to maintain access to utilities within the existing right-of-way to be, uh, vacated. A deeded utility easement from the city of Bristol, Virginia to B V U will be signed and recorded prior to the second reading of this ordinance. Upon the recording of the utility easement, the staff recommends approval of the vacation, attached for copies of the petition, declaration of understanding, and a drawing showing the location of the request, and a copy of the ordinance for first reading. Upon the recording of the utility easement, the staff recommends that city council vacate the public right-of-way as shown on the attached drawing, and attached for copies of the petition, declaration of understanding, and the drawing as well.
Thank you. Uh, nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so I hereby close the hearing. The next item is the first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol, ordinance twenty-one hyphen four. Staff comment.
Uh, council, I just reiterate, uh, what I said in, uh, the previous public hearing.
And nobody signed up for public comment on this item. Uh, what's the pleasure of council for the first reading of the ordinance?
Uh, I move for first reading of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Council discussion?
Did, uh, any, have any comments or concerns from any of the residents of Carter Street Northwest of that?
No.
I just wondered, because, I mean, they were probably the ones that would be most impacted, not to say they couldn't go down to Wagner and come and crock it, which they probably did right now anyway, but I was just wondering if any, any concern, any concerns on the public safety side?
No, we ha- we have not. It's been circulated to the departments.
Do we do, uh, in this situation, a, a traffic count to see, cause I remember if we did this a few years ago for a property on Sutherland Street, I believe, where we actually closed a roadway there off of Euclid, um, I believe a church there, they had a properties on both sides of the road and a preschool and kids traveling back and forth across the roads, and there was really no traffic, and it didn't really affect anyone. Is, is that something we still do, traffic counts?
I don't think we did one on this property.
If there's, uh, if there's no other, um, council discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an open and improved public right-of-way, ordinance twenty-one hyphen four.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is second reading of ordinance to amend chapter two, article one, section two hyphen three, purchases generally of the city code by caption only, ordinance twenty-one hyphen three. Staff report.
Uh, council, this is the second reading of the ordinance of the, uh, new purchase ordinance that we, uh, went through at the meeting in July. Uh, attached is the ordinance and also the changes that would be made. Uh, you can see under, on page one seventeen of the agenda, we have changed, uh, item two, uh, purchases with an expected cost of less than ten thousand are now exempt from competitive practices and procedures. Item three, the procurement of goods and services with an expected cost of ten thousand or more but less than twenty-five shall require a minimum of three written quotes. The procurement of goods or non-professional services with an expected cost of twenty-five thousand or more but less than or equal to a hundred shall require a minimum of four written quotations. The procurement of goods or non-professional services with an expected cost greater than a hundred thousand shall require the use of competitive sealed bidding or competition, competitive negotiation. Professional services with an expected cost of less than or equal to eighty thousand shall follow the above mentioned thresholds, and professional services that are expected to cost greater than eighty thousand shall require the use of competitive negotiation. Those are the changes, uh, from our previous, uh, purchase ordinance. And this also follows, um, the Virginia Procurement Act as well.
Thank you. Uh, nobody signed up for public comment on this item. What's the pleasure of council for having the second reading of the ordinance?
Uh, I move for the second reading of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Council discussion?
Uh, thank you for the work that you all have put into, uh, to redoing our purchasing policy. Anytime that we can come into compliance and, and kind of line up with the Virginia Public Procurement Act, I think that is a good thing. Uh, I think it simplifies and streamlines our process, which is, uh, also going to be very helpful to, uh, to speed up things when we need to, uh, need to spend money. Maybe you don't have to wait a whole month for a council meeting, you know, for a, for a smaller purchase, so, um, I think this is a good change, and, uh, and I appreciate the work you all did on it.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter two, article one, section two hyphen three, the city code pertaining to purchases generally, uh, and I believe this was by caption only.
Yes. Thank you. So now we're looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Uh, I move for the adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any other further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
Council, I, for, um, these purposes, you probably need to pull items one through six and vote on those separately, as Ms. Nave was not a member of council at that time.
She would have been
Do what?
The thirteenth and the twenty-first.
Uh, that, that's right, she was absent on the thirteenth, so it'd be items one through five.
Well, yeah, no, one through, cause you were absent.
So we
Cause I attended the call meeting.
Would we want to pull one through five, vote on that, and then vote on six separately?
She was
She hadn't been sworn in, though, at that time, on the night of the eighth.
I think I was sworn in the seven.
Yeah, cause that was, that was a meeting we discussed and voted on the
That's right.
Committee appointments.
I take that back, it is items one through four.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No.
So, since, um
And thirteen.
I was here for the eight.
You were going to thirteen.
So items one through four need to be pulled and voted on
And item six.
And, and item
Cause she wasn't here then.
That's right, and item six, items one through four and item six need to be pulled, uh, and she would abstain from those, and then you all would vote on the, and then everybody could vote on the others.
So, uh, I move that we adopt the consent agenda except for items one through four and item six, which we will vote on separately.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, but not including items one through four and item six. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Stay.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
And we would need a motion for the remaining items. And we would need a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda now.
I move for approval of items one through four and item six of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Abstain.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item on our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.